Okay. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the school committee. Acton School Committee meeting, May 12th, 2022. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have any adjustments to our agenda tonight?
No, there are no changes.
Okay. Comments from the public? Any?
Small public, no comments.
Celebration of learning.
Thank you. Celebration of learning tonight, I asked Nate Kulpitz, our wellness and gym teacher, to be here just to kind of give you an update on our intramurals. If you remember, we didn't have enough interest in spring sports. So what we did is we developed an intramurals program for kids that's been very exciting for them. And it's in the month of May, and we're in the month of May. So I thought I'd just turn it over to Nate, and he'll show you what we've been doing.
Right. But first of all, thanks for having me, everybody. Um, let me go ahead and introduce myself. It's gonna be library.
Not gym?
No, I know. He's the presentation. Okay, sorry. Sorry, I clicked on the wrong one. And now... You can see I'm not the IT guy.
Well, he's right behind you.
Good thing. We keep him close by, just in case.
And he's not the wellness instructor.
That's right. Oh, no. All right, moving on. All right, so I just made a short little presentation here just to kind of show you some of the stuff that we've been working on. So it was spring intramurals. Obviously, we weren't able to field a baseball or softball team, which was a bummer. But we, and unfortunately, when we don't have those sort of school events, we fear that kids are just gonna go home and not do anything. So that's why I kind of wanted to make sure that we had some sort of activity outlet for some of these kids. I know there's a lot of academic stuff that happens after school, but something athletic and active is important as well. So it's hosted, put on by myself, Tracy Scully, who's our athletic director, and Megan Goodman, who is one of our first-year teachers teaching third grade. But yeah, so we operate Tuesdays and Thursdays after school. We just had a session just not too long ago. So I felt that it was important to try and highlight some of these sports that may be, that are not your more traditional sports. Just because my hope with this program is kind of bring some of these kids that may not see themselves being successful at the baseball, the softball, some of these more standard sports, and kind of bring them out of the woodwork to try and pull as many kids as possible. So we got kickball, which is a house favorite. We've got lacrosse skills and drills. I've got a background with lacrosse. So I coached my son's team ever since he's been in pre-K. So it's going on like four or five years now. But this is a sport that is offered regardless of where they go at high school. Most likely, they're gonna have a lacrosse team. So I felt like it was good to try to introduce some of the concepts there just so that, you know, they have some sort of introduction to that sport when it comes time.
Did we have lacrosse sticks?
We have, yes. We have very beginner lacrosse sticks that Mr. Martin had gotten previously. He said he tried to introduce lacrosse, the kids hated it. So, but that being said, I was determined. And so far, so far, I think that we have, we've had some fun out there. So, so we'll see. We'll see what happens in the future there.
There are a couple of kids from Acton who are doing the Sanford lacrosse skills and drills clinics.
Excellent. Awesome.
They're kind of the younger set, a little bit younger than these kids.
Yes.
Stanford is kind of pushing lacrosse for the younger kids to move them up to the older programs.
Program is becoming a more and more popular thing for these programs that have lacrosse. It's definitely increased in popularity in Maine in the last 10 years significantly. So, and then I got spike ball. If you've been anywhere in the beach or some grassy field, you may have seen one of these sets out there. It looks like a trampoline ring. And it's very similar to volleyball, just a smaller ball like this. And instead of hitting the ball over the net to the other team, you are serving it off of the net. So it's like a trampoline sort of effect. But once you get the flow of the game, you can really see some good volley stuff happening, and the kids get really excited about it. It was something that I just brought to Acton this year. So it will take a few years for kids to really build their skills there. But again, I am determined, and it will be a house favorite, I assure you. And then the last one, we've got ultimate frisbee. So that's another sport, a nice frisbee game. You're playing like the length of what you would, an abbreviated football field. Of course, we're not playing a full length like that. But it's just passing and maneuvering. There are end zones, you score points that way. But it's just one of those sports where it really hits a lot of aspects for your speed, your agility, your strength in a lot of different ways in some of these more traditional sports. And because of that, I mean, we've done it in PE, and I've seen some kids that are not successful with some of the other activities, and they love this game. And that's what, those are the sports that I really like, is seeing those kids that I don't see shine, and they really shine in those sort of activities. So I thought that would be a good addition. So then I just included some photos here. This is our setup. So this is spike ball. So you can see it kind of looks like a mini, like a children's mini trampoline. But yeah, so you're just spiking that ball right off of the net, just like the name implies. This is our group gathered right after lacrosse. And so those are our little makeshift sticks there. They do an okay job.
And those are exactly what I had in elementary school.
Absolutely. So very base, base level. It's not exactly the easiest to catch a ball with those just because they do tend to bounce right out. But they enjoyed it, as the smiling faces show that. Here are a couple of action photos. So yeah, so this is a, this was a game where, it's a classic called Sharks and Minnows, where the idea is to be able to maneuver across the field with your ball without dropping it. And you are a minnow. And then the predators, the sharks, they're trying to force you to drop the ball without contact, but they're trying to make you change direction and drop the ball. So it's just working on sort of gameplay maneuvering and spatial awareness sort of stuff. It looks like I'm gonna make them do sprints, but I promise we were playing a game there. Let's see. There's Mrs. Scully getting in on the appearance there just so that she could get in on the action. And again, playing spike ball. This was just this afternoon also. And a couple of other photos with some of the other students.
What grades are they in here?
So we opened it up to, it was fourth and fifth grade. We do those, them on Tuesday. And then we have the sixth through eighth grade on Thursday. So I did want to open it up to those younger groups because those are kids that wouldn't really be able to do after-school sports here traditionally had we had those softball and baseball teams, unless someone else was planning on piloting that program. And honestly, the number turnout for that group is larger than the sixth through eight. So despite it only, despite it being less grades, it's actually more kids with that cohort.
I know my son would have signed up, but he does Lego robotics on Tuesdays.
Right, I know. The conflicting is, the conflicting, I know. And that's just because we do have other after-school things happening here at the school. So unfortunately, not everybody can be there. But the kids that can come seem to really be enjoying it. And we've been blessed with some nice weather here lately, so. And that's all I got, all I got for you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about the program?
No, but I think it's nice to be bringing in some different things.
Yes.
And to, you know,
Absolutely.
Challenge the kids in other ways to develop their skills and their spatial.
Only because, and especially some of these games that we're playing, my hope is that these are some games that you can continue on playing with your friends well beyond college, et cetera. You know, you don't always see the group of people getting together, "Let's play fast pitch baseball." But you're a lot more likely to see people throwing a frisbee to each other or, you know, playing a small, smaller agility game like spike ball. But yeah, so that's the goal.
Do you ever offer anything for the younger grades, like first and third grade, or no?
I think, I think as long as we have the support, you know, we could probably operate something like that. I think, obviously, this was sort of like, let's tie something together because we just found out. But moving forward, if we know that there is enough interest and as long as we have the support staff, then I couldn't rule it out.
Before Nate started, last year during COVID times, we didn't have any sports. And we had quite a robust two-season intramurals, and we did three through five because that was our cohort, was three through five. We changed it this year, kind of the cut became four. We're going back to three through five next year. So third is not at all, it's very reasonable to bring third graders.
Absolutely.
And I'm very encouraged that our younger students are outnumbering our middle school kids to join these, which means when they become middle school kids, we'll have more of a, we'll have more of a group for our competitive sports when that time comes.
So do we know if there's a reason why the middle school kids aren't playing like the actual school sports?
That is a great question.
Because I think one of our, isn't the eighth, is one of them really, really small?
Well, it's our lowest, it's our lowest numbered group. Our middle school is the smallest size that I think it's ever been right now because it's just seventh and eighth. And I think eighth grade only has like 11 or 12 kids, I know. So there's not a lot of kids to draw from. The younger kids are where the bulk of our numbers are.
Big time.
And that's just because they gotta work their way up. So they're eligible for intramurals, and they show up, which is great.
Even just in fifth grade, you can see that a lot of those kids are active and are doing some sort of sport. So I would imagine even next year, our numbers, like for soccer, for example, I could imagine that numbers-wise, we should be in pretty good shape.
And the school team sports, those are six through eight?
Six through eight, yep.
Kind of in some middle schools, they're only seventh and eighth.
Only seven and eight, but we, oh yeah, we'll need those sixth graders for sure. And some of those sixth graders, I mean, if anybody saw any of our soccer games, some of our sixth graders were some of our standout athletes.
That's great.
Oh, yeah, it's really great to see.
I know with the rec, a lot of the kids go to Sanford sports for the competitiveness. So I know personally, a couple of the kids went to Sanford to be on their teams for the competitiveness of it. So we have that problem with the rec trying to get some of my friends,
Yes.
my kids' friends to play on the rec because they want to go to Sanford for the more competitiveness.
Yeah, the competition.
Yeah.
It is great that they can learn here in Acton though, without the competitiveness, which is great, like pre-K and kindergarten. I've heard that Sanford was a little cutthroat for pre-K.
I mean, it's just so funny because, and with these age groups, there is such a social impact. So if you have a friend that's doing this, and then you hear anything good about it, then you're more likely to do that. Now, whether that's to go play sports over at Sanford and leave the rec department or if that's to actually stay here at Acton, it's really, can be so spotty like that. So just gonna try and access as many kids as possible to say good things about the programs and attract as many people as possible. That's the, that's the goal.
And football is, in the fall, is gonna be, actually, a lot of the fifth graders that are coming up to sixth grade, a lot of them are playing football.
A lot of them are playing football. Football is a big soccer competitor.
And I'm like, you're gonna be on the middle school team. Like, I'm so happy that you're gonna be on the middle school team. He's like, but I want to play football.
I know. We did have one athlete that kids, that he would leave practice here, he would go to football practice, but that is an exceptional case. That is a lot for a young middle schooler, so.
And it's nice, too, that now we have a rec director in Acton and a rec committee, which, I mean, it's been a while since we've really had any success in that. And last night, I know Samantha last night was giving a lot of the ideas that she has for coming. And I think it's gonna be great.
Yeah.
It's gonna be nice to have something local that the kids can participate in, you know?
Absolutely, within the community, for sure. Certainly.
Now, this may be, it's still you, but, because you just introduced them as a wellness and what?
I mentioned it's health and wellness. Health and wellness is really the business.
So what have we done? Somebody was asking me, but what have we done with the health program?
Yes, so the health program, essentially, we're diving into some more specific.
For curriculum?
Yes, curriculum stuff. So we have had an additional block for seventh and eighth graders where we've been talking more about nutrition. I'm a big outdoors guy personally, and I think there's a, for personal wellness, like, it's hard to have meet all these personal wellness goals if environmentally and like how we're caring about our surroundings, if those aren't met also. You know, unhealthy environment, unhealthy personal well-being. So I've been connecting those dots. We talked about a lot of that stuff with our Green Day that we had recently. We had a really cool speaker that came. And that is kind of all channeled through the health and wellness sort of access point. But, and then we've been continuing to talk about like healthy habits. We did a lot of social emotional health. I was kind of working alongside Kristi, our social worker here, just, you know, what is she talking about? So I don't like overdo that sort of material. But by including the health piece, you open up to a lot more than just, you know, running around in the gym. So I've been kind of expanding on, I mean, PE can, if you were to drop down PE, there's a lot that drops under what could be considered PE. But that health aspect kind of brings things full circle, I think. So just been kind of using it as an addition to sort of, sort of.
But I mean, eventually, we'll have a curriculum?
Yeah, so while I've been, I've been assessing three standards of health. For seventh and eighth, they are assessed on those standards. Now, was it a full curriculum? No. But as an introductory point, it's a heck of a lot more of a curriculum than we had to begin with.
We never had any.
Right, so kind of, we're moving in that direction.
Just curious.
Nate's first year, he's done a great job.
Yes.
Taking us in kind of a different direction, but also including a lot of the things that are historically and traditionally fun and good for kids. It's been awesome to have.
Awesome. I think the intramurals is a good program for, like you say, you know, if you really want to gung ho, get your kids into sports, yeah, maybe Sanford's your best bet. But to get people active, to get the kids active, intramurals is, you know, I think that's really where it goes.
Kids are going home and not being very active. Even just the exposure to the outdoors, like, that's been a big focus in just our health curriculum is, you know, do we need to sit and cover material inside? Or are we gonna go outside and access some of our gorgeous campus? And we can verbally have these discussions out there. Just exposure to the outdoors. That, I mean, if you were to take one kid and you could improve one thing about being healthy and develop some sort of healthy habit, going outside more is a great, is a great thing, you know? So, I mean, that is an easy goal that we can achieve here at Acton. So that's something I've really been trying to hammer down.
And we have kayaks or something?
Oh, yeah.
It is. Soon as the water warms up, I don't know if this guy can swim.
I gotta swim, all right?
We're gonna take a PD day, and I'm gonna go over a bunch of safety pieces right down here at the foot of the lake. And then we're gonna do some things with kids when the water's a little warmer.
Yeah.
Somebody goes for a swim right now, it's gonna get their attention.
Yeah, even beginning of June is cold.
What it's gonna do is we'll launch, what we'll do is we'll work with Nate about what to do this spring, but we'll actually use them in September because it's, the water's great.
The water's warming.
Way less risk issues with kids in September. And we have September and early October.
And we start early. Start the school year pretty early anyway.
We start in September, yeah, yeah. Because it's about six weeks. The air, it's funny, and you know, we're all from Lake Communion, right?
Well, that's the thing.
The air is cool, but the water retains its, retains a nice temperature for quite a while into the fall. You've got to deal with getting out, it's cold. But if you do the canoeing right, you don't get wet, so it doesn't matter.
Yes.
Anybody else got any questions or comments? Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, absolutely, yeah, thank you for having me, guys.
Great to, great to hear what's going on there, Nate.
Oh, yeah, there's plenty going on. Plenty going on.
All right.
All right, thank you, everyone.
See you, Nate.
Thanks. Okay. Okay, so I asked John to put COVID back on our agenda only because we need to keep track of what's going on around the state because the counts are going up everywhere. There are, there are school systems that have had to go back to masking on the buses and in the building. So this is a, we, we used to be like in the, we used to be in the low area. And now York County has moved up into the medium area. So not that we have to do anything about it right now, we just need to be aware that we've got graduation coming up, and we've got some other big things where we'll have a lot of people together. So we just need to be aware that the counts are up, and we have to be diligent in keeping our kids safe and our staff safe. And I think, if I remember correctly, we gave John permission to decide when we needed to make a change in the building. Didn't we vote to do that a long time ago? So, so, you know, you can let us know if you think we need to make any changes. But I mean, right now, I think we're okay.
And in the school environment, which is what I need to keep an eye on, local data is one of the data points. But how are we doing with our staff and our students with wellness and sickness? We have one case that's active in the school, and the person's not in school, right now, just one. As of this week.
Right.
So we're doing okay in the school. You're right, in the community, it's, we've seen it, you know, change quite a bit. And I don't know if it's, I'm gonna guess, we had some sickness points here where it was pretty close to that 15%. And maybe people have had, and it's run some of its course with our younger people. Because our school's not reflective of that data for Acton or York County. The school's only got one case right now.
What about measles and mumps? Because a lot of people complained they couldn't get their kids to the doctors to be vaccinated.
For the vaccinations, yeah. So, yeah. That happened in the fall, and there was a deadline. And any student who hadn't been vaccinated, because the state law changed that you have to be now, there are no loopholes. There's a health plan that Carol signs off with the parent and their physician to get those vaccinations caught up. But if you're eight, nine, or 10 years old, those infant vaccines, it's different. You have to do it as a series, and it might take some more time. But we had a handful of children that weren't vaccinated who chose to. And only one small, I'll be careful because I don't want to identify anybody, but there was, let's just say, a couple of students who decided to homeschool because that was, vaccinations wasn't gonna happen.
So you're saying there's no religious exemption anymore?
No.
Nope. Wow.
Yeah, and that changed in September of this school year. That's why we gave people windows to get it done. Carol did a great job on that. She was right on top of it, so we're in good shape.
Okay, so let's move on to number five, the consent agenda. And I will look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
One second. Mary and CJ, all in favor? Okay, then we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
I just have three quick bullet points. We kind of discussed prior to the meeting, we talked a little bit about Sanford publishing the top 10. We have 22 students from Acton in this graduating class, of which two are in the top 10. That's pretty good for a group of 22 kids.
Yeah.
And they'll be doing their traditional walkthrough at the day of their graduation, which is Wednesday, the 8th of June. And they'll be here in the morning. And of course, you're all welcome, as always. I don't know what time they'll be here, but I'll know more as we get closer. But it'll be that morning, and they'll come on a bus, and they'll start down by Patty's End, where Patty and Sandra are at those bar doors, and come out down here through the music door to the bus circle, and then go to the sign for a photo, and all the kids line it, and it's just, it's very fun.
It's a real fun. If you haven't, if you haven't seen it, you really should try to come because it's a really fun time for them. And the graduates love it, and the kids love it, and the staff loves to see these kids that they had from kindergarten right up through. And it's a fun time.
It is pretty neat. The, I'll keep you updated with my weekly updates to you as to what time that would be, if your calendar will allow you to attend. The K3 Literacy Fair is on the sign, and it's scheduled for 5/26, Thursday to 26, which is a K through 3 event for children and families. And Rachel Driscoll did a nice job pulling that together. And also, lastly, I just want to say that Will's back. He's here this evening. And I wanted to thank Andy for being flexible with the scheduling and covering for what to him seemed like a lifetime. But it was great to have him here in the evening and helping out in a different capacity. He did a great job.
Spent some quality time in the middle school wing. Buddy proved out, man.
And that's it for me.
Nobody's happier to see him back, probably, than Andy. Okay. Any other questions now for any of the other reports, administrators' reports?
I have a question for Mike. New devices for the whole school?
Yeah.
Whole school.
So what does that mean?
That means the, I thought I'd spend money next year.
What about what we had before? Was that a program they were discontinuing? The MLTI?
That's still active.
Okay.
And it's operated by the state. The state chooses the devices, and it's kind of like overseen by the state. So we have to abide by the state's regulations. But with this, it was an FCC grant. Emergency Connectivity Funds is what they called it, ECF. And it allowed us to purchase wireless or internet connectivity resources or devices so students can bring them home and use them. So everybody's on the same playing field with technology. And it funded us to put a device in every student's hand.
So what are they getting?
The same, I mean, they're getting Chromebooks, but they're getting new Chromebooks. The ones we have now are aging. I've got piles of them growing on my desk that are just falling apart. And I'm not, I mean, there's no reason to fix them. It's just, they're just disposable at this point. So we'll be refreshing every device through the school. They're gonna be all on the same unit or device. So it'll be easy to maintain and manage. Right now, I have like three different models and makes that I'm distributing throughout the school.
Right, the different age groups had different things, right?
Right.
Yeah, so that's great.
Yeah.
Awesome.
It was accepted and approved, and we're able to get enough for 250 kids.
Awesome.
Fantastic.
Who takes the science MEAs?
Fifth grade and eighth grade. An 11th. So if we have any kids that we have to call up for grade 11, if they're not at the high school, there's somewhere else. It's on us to make sure they get assessed.
I think there was special placement someplace. Oh, talk about students with, how many students do we have in the school building now?
Right now, 226.
226?
We're looking at like 248 next year is our projection. Of course, that projection is plus or minus depending on what happens over the summer. It's usually plus. We usually add. We might lose a few, but we always add a few and we don't know about until September, people show up, and they're like, "We just moved here," for whatever reason, we don't know who they are until September.
That's a big jump. 20, 20 kids roughly?
22.
That's pretty big.
Well, the group that's going out is really small.
Yeah.
And the group that's coming in is bigger than the group that's going out. There's part of it right there. The pre-K group coming in is twice the size of the group that's going to this, as the freshman class. It's a very small eighth grade.
We have that every 10 or 15 years or something. One area. And then my kids always get those huge classes, and I'm like... There's a lot of new people in town, but they didn't all bring kids with them, but different population.
Yeah. I went back and historically, just kind of for my own reasons, looked at, infinite campus keeps your class numbers. And it goes back to 2006, but it's blank. And it goes back to 2006, but it's blank. So, right around 2010, I was able to graph numbers. And yeah, there were classes of, it wasn't rare to see a class of 25, a class of 38.
Wow.
And then you get to have random 11 or 12. But it was really, it was, it wasn't just 20 or 21, it was 25, 28, 31.
Yeah, I can remember some pretty big eighth grade classes graduating.
So, I think, you know, I think we atrophied there a little bit and COVID didn't help because people weren't sending their kids. It was hard to figure out who was really still out there and homeschooling was getting big. But now, I think that the scales have tipped back to what we might call normal for public schooling. You're seeing, you're gonna see growth again. And I can't say that it'll go back to those biggest days you ever had here, but the numbers in the past are looking more like the numbers for the future than the current numbers we've lived the last two years, is what I'm saying, by looking at the history record.
What, now, the Emory Mills Bridge is not open. So, how's that run going over there? Because there's three kids over there.
Right. That would be, I, to be honest with you, I don't know what we've done for those three kids to get them to school, but I can tell you there's zero issues because nothing has crossed my desk.
Right.
Well, I think Samantha is one of them and she's a driver.
She's got two.
So, she's probably worked out a pretty good plan of her role.
Oh, I know, but I mean, I go over there, because my son lives under, it's nine miles from my house to that last Acton house. And it's usually five miles one way. It's nine miles if I go down around the corner, so. But I just wondered.
I think Liz has a question.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to, I was just wondering, with the computers, the old computers, like, what is the plan for those? Is there any way that those can be offered to any students or?
Yeah, we have policy for decommissioning technology. I'm kind of, I'm behind the ball on that one still. But yes, Will, we will work on, once I figure out the inventory and what we have for quantities and the deployment for next year, a notice will go out to the public for decommissioning and what devices are available and pricing and all of that.
There's a policy for that.
Yeah, I think we've got, we have a policy for that anyway, right? Yeah. That's a good, that's a good deal because sometimes parents like to have extra devices at home and a good chance to pick up one. Any other questions for our administrative group? Nope. Okay, then. Let's go on to progress monitoring and take a look at the state dashboard.
When we developed the agenda, I was talking to Lori about some things in progress monitoring because in June, you're gonna get a healthy dose of NWEA scores and that kind of stuff. So, that's next month. So, she mentioned to me that there's actually a direct need to update you on the state dashboard that we're supposed to do it once a year. So, we thought we would do that now and I'll turn it over to Lori.
As part of the grant application for the federal funds, Title I, Title II, and Title IV, you're supposed to put this information or the link to this information on your website and let the public know that it's there. And so, I thought I'd share it with you in case somebody should look at it and ask, you know, you any questions that you would at least know about it. We also will put up the, I usually put a Google form up on the website for a little while to ask if anybody has any input, public input, on what we use the funds for. In the past, you know, Title I has always been our Title I support. We don't get a lot of money, but we use it for staffing. Title II is typically literacy or math, professional development or training. And then Title IV has some different pockets of money categories. You can use it for tech integration, wellness, or health and safety of students. So, we usually write the Title IV grant to put a little bit in each of those areas. But this is the state dashboard. This is where we have, there's all this information here. And you can go up here. So, this is last year, 2021. It doesn't have 21, 22 yet because obviously it waits till the end of the school year. This is information that's pulled from NEO and sites, systems like that. So, every school system in the district has data in there specific to their schools and district. So, when you go here, you would, we would pick our school. Let's see if my computer's gonna be slow. Oh, that happened. Come back. I'll try again. School. I've been having trouble with this site all day. Here we go. And then, obviously, you go to the dropdown, we pick Acton Elementary. And then, once Acton is chosen, then you could click any one of those areas to see what the data shows. So, we could choose the snapshot of the school, which then just gives information, one school in the district, our grade span, how many kids as of a certain date. I believe it's the October 1 count maybe. Yep. Total teachers, chronic absenteeism. And so, this is, like I said, all the data that we send off to the state. And then, you can click deeper into each of those, each of those categories. One of the areas that, let's see if I can figure out how to get back without going all the way out. The 2021 data from our math and literacy assessment that we took with NWEA is also in here. So, it's worth taking a look at that. The science data for last year is not in here because that was the first year that we used a new assessment through Numeridian. And so, we won't see data until this year because last year was more of a pilot. But if you go into the state assessment data, that will filter out. And right now, ELA is checked off. So, we'll see that we tested 138 kids. No, we had 138 kids, 137 were tested. So, our participation rate was 99.3%. And you're required to have 95%, so. And then, how many kids were at or above the state standards? And then, how many were below overall? And that's grades three through eight. So, that would be our literacy data. And then, you can click to see the math data as well. And the math data is quite different. Since they changed to the NWEA, it looks like we have more kids at or above the state standards as measured by the benchmarks of the NWEA. So, that's a little bit different. It'll be interesting to see where it falls this year. Hoping for a little more growth too. So, that's the state dashboard. Like I said, the link will go up on the website and we'll send out a reminder that it's there in case anybody in the public is interested in.
Public access is under our school website, under About Us and School Report Card. You'll see all the reports that Lori just displayed and you can have access to the portal itself where you can dig deeper on your own.
It's under About Us.
About Us and School Report Card.
School Report Card.
So, if you start digging through there or, you know, you have any questions, just let me know. Or if, you know, once you know it's up there and I send out a memo to everybody that it's up there, if you get any questions, let me know.
Okay.
All right? Lots of info.
Lots of info, I guess.
But you're providing the state with the information, right?
Yes, right. Yep, yep. Except for the assessment stuff.
Yeah.
We take the assessment, it gets uploaded and all of that. But yes, we enter all of the information.
Lori mentioned a software program that would make sense to us. You may never have heard of NEO. It's four or five years old. And NEO is the standard main software that all schools use to upload data. Everything from, you know, number of suspensions to, you know, number of special ed students and transportation, everything goes into NEO and certain things.
We've heard it.
Yeah. It gets loaded by certain administrators and then everything gets certified and sent to the state. Thank you, Mrs. Lodge.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to number eight then. And we'll go with committee reports and we'll start with the policy committee.
Me? Okay. So, again, we're just kind of going through and updating mostly basic language, adding superintendent slash principal. So, and then Lisa discovered a couple of the references. Just when they were written, the wording was incorrect. So, like on the first one, DI, there is no selection of superintendent. It was supposed to be from the beginning, superintendent powers and duties, that type of thing. So, she combed through and actually figured out the right references. So, that was fantastic. Lisa's doing a fantastic job with these. The only one that we kind of had a lot of attention to was DIE, about the auditing and Can't sound here. John, do you want to talk about that one?
I think any of the questions that we had were cleared up when we were discussing school committee selection of auditor and things like that.
Yeah.
That we had decided through policy because it was going hand in hand with actually selecting an auditor in town. So, it was serendipitous that these came up at the same time. So, the way the policy is written now, we scaled it way down so that it locksteps with the town and the town's decision on an auditor. Originally, the language there was a little bit different than what our actual practice was. So, now, we've aligned it so that our practice and the town's practice are the same. We had to take, we had to take things out first, put things in, is what we did.
Because it originally made it sound like we could pick anyone we wanted and we can't.
Well, we can legally, but if we have changed our policy now, I mean, according to the Department of Education, the school department can, if they choose, select their own auditor. However, it doesn't really make sense for us to try to do that because all of our stuff goes through our treasurer and we have a close connection with the town hall and the selectmen and when they sign our warrants and things like that. So, we've always gone with the town for it. Legally, we could.
Okay.
But we've never, we've never taken that route.
No, because if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
An added expense.
Yeah, it would be an added expense.
Yeah. Yeah. I just had a question on DIC, petty cash accounts. Now, I just don't know. I never heard this word, so I should be looking in the dictionary. The petty cash funds will be replenished as impressed funds?
Yes.
Okay.
That was a word that I, I think from my accounting.
Did you look it up?
I did.
He brought it to the meeting and said, "This is a word."
And it means a small amount of money.
Okay.
Such as petty cash, if you were to Google it, which was interesting.
Okay. I was just like, that's a misspelling. I should look it up, but I didn't have time.
We took care of that for you.
Okay. And just DID, if you can, the second sentence after, you know, responsibility for this, it says whom the, and if you could get appropriate backup on that line, just for, you see how that is?
Oh, I see the line's broken.
Yeah. So, just fix that. So, with those changes.
I think Lisa can handle that.
We'll give her.
That isn't a major crisis, yet.
So, they were just reviews and we don't actually have to vote on accepting them?
We just vote to accept them as reviewed and approved.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'll look for a motion to accept those.
We have, well, we can do that, but we have one for a second read.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
That isn't on here.
Oh, that's right. I looked at that last meeting.
It's not on the agenda?
No.
Well, we could put it on the June agenda.
It was the one from last month that was the first read.
It was the first read, IKAB, Learning Management System. And they, she probably forgot to put that on there, but this would be the second read. Can we do that?
Can we add that?
Can we just add that?
You can.
But it's not in here.
You can if you make a motion to add, make a change to the agenda, because Judy asked me at the beginning and I said, "There were no changes. This is a change." So, make a motion to add it to the agenda and then.
We don't have it. We don't, we don't have it.
Well, you had it last week, last month.
It's a second vote.
Well, can you copy it? Can someone copy this for us? So, we all have a copy?
I have part of the, of last month's.
She has it.
Yeah, I have. You can make a copy of that.
It's very brief.
I know.
Right.
So, we'll just look it up.
I mean, there's no point hanging it on till next month. You know what I mean? It's just a.
Well, that's fine.
My opinion.
Okay, while we're waiting for that one, that will be a separate vote. I'll look for a motion to accept these seven as reviewed and approved by the committee.
I'll move that.
I'll second that.
Okay, CJ and Jeanette. Any further discussion over these? All in favor?
And Mary, if you want to, while you make a motion to add something to the agenda, you could certainly also add the committee, the long-range planning committee that's not on here and say you didn't meet if you want to add it officially to the agenda because it's not on there, it didn't meet. Okay. I noticed it. But just like negotiations where we don't meet, we don't put it on there.
Right.
Okay. But it is a standing committee and it's not on there.
Right.
I have to look at that closely to see it was missing. Next time.
I'm sorry, I didn't think.
Actually, I didn't have page two. You heard, right? Did you look at that?
It went back.
You didn't have page two on everything?
Yeah, I sent her, I sent her a.
So, I was like, well. So, then I got it late and I didn't get to see it wasn't listed.
Double sided. The change is it misses every page. That's exactly right.
Okay, so this is a second reading for IKAB, Learning Management System.
So, do you need a motion to add that to the agenda?
I need, yeah, I need a motion to add that to the agenda first.
Oh, I thought we did.
No.
No, we did not.
Go ahead, Amanda.
So, make a motion to add IKAB for a second read to our agenda?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay.
Do you want to say 8.1.1.8? Does that help you? Because otherwise, there's no category.
It would be the next one in sequence.
8.1.1.8.
Oh, my goodness. So, that's taken care of. We don't have to go back to that.
You want to vote on?
So, we voted on it for a first read. Are you all set now that you've seen it?
Yeah.
For a second read?
Yeah.
So, I'll look for a motion then to accept IKAB, Learning Management Systems, for a second reading for adoption.
I'll move that.
Okay?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? New business. Good catch.
So, your new business is 9.1, which is 0 to 1 scoring. And there was an email in my weekly update, we had a discussion via email about, and Mary, you can take this, in the workshop, you don't vote. So, therefore, this is the next meeting after a workshop that you can vote. And if I got the gist of it, this is taking formal action to give administration in the school the direction to look into and make some changes to the 0-100 grading so that in June, we can show you what our plan is. And you can take a look at that and vote on that for a change or not for September. Did I summarize that correctly?
Correct.
Okay.
I just thought, you know, I don't really worry about the solution and how, you know, that's administrative between the teachers and stuff. But what, I just wanted to make sure that administration knows for middle school, we were hoping to change and that seemed to be the consensus at the workshop. Just to send you in the right direction.
Yeah, they've been.
But it was 1 to 4, so whatever you want to do.
No, I mean, it's, I mean, I'm fine with that. I guess I, I thought we might be, I remember John or somebody saying at the last meeting that a couple, because it was kind of close, our workshop was kind of close to this meeting, that this meeting would be like too close to be able to have anything to.
Oh, yeah.
To do and to go on with the, to put it on the June agenda. So, I thought, I thought we'd kind of agree to that. But it doesn't matter to me if you want, if you want to make a motion to, a formal motion from the workshop to instruct the administration to move in that direction. Go ahead.
So moved.
That's fine. So moved.
Okay. I thought they were working on it.
So, it's not for, it's not asking for an updating what's happening, it's just saying, It's just saying, from what we talked about at the workshop, let's make sure that it's moving forward.
Six through eight, zero to 100 grading.
I didn't read that email that way.
Okay, she needs a, we made a motion. Any seconds?
I'll second it.
Amanda'll second it?
Yeah.
All those in favor? My concern is that we need to know, it's, it's great for them to be working on it, but we need to know as a board, it's really our responsibility to know how this is going to happen and how it's going to impact teaching practice.
Yeah, but I don't think we have to rush them either.
Right.
Because, you know, it'll be implemented in September when school starts, but, you know, I don't want anybody to feel rushed.
Well, don't feel rushed.
It's not, it's not something that we can just kind of work on over the summer because we have the teachers now and we're setting things up in Brightspace to open school September 1st. With the teachers, we'll probably do that open house. And these things need to be decided upon and loaded now to be in the right place. So what we're really doing is we're changing a ton of our practices in assessing, which means we need to now go back and make those changes in Brightspace. And with the staff, so they understand what they need to do. And we've trial ballooned a bunch of different things to see how it will work. By the June 2nd meeting, first Thursday of June, we need to have that wrapped up and need to be able to provide you something to vote on, which originally we came at this as just reporting. What do you want your report card to look like like? We want our kids like not the ones who report, we want to know that the kid's getting 82 in math and then 87 in reading. And that's not coming out of that workshop. That's not what was being asked for. So we have to go back and really look at the fundamentals of trying to average any standards based world. And it's, it does take time, but our mandate and our move was to have it done by June. Because we won't, put it this way, if we don't get it done by June 3rd, 2nd, we won't get it done by September 1st. That's all I'm telling you. We might as well shoot for it and just go all in and get it done while things are messing.
All right. Well, my thing is, so I finally got to see one of these report cards up close. And there's a lot of wordy stuff for the teacher. So I think a lot of it was for the teacher and not for the parents. That's the way that report card read to me.
The one out of Mastery Connect.
The one that we're not getting.
That one that's.
Yes. But, but the information in that is pertinent, of course, to the teacher. You know, it lets them know where their kid is, but now let's summarize it for that report card. So I, you know.
So that part's been done. It's all the behind the scenes calculations and making everything work and talk to each other. And I'll tell you, I'm like kind of stressed about some of this stuff. I'm not going to lie.
Well, that's what I mean.
But, I mean, you can't get like the teachers who have already done this in the past, the zero to 100.
A long time ago.
Right. It can't be made now.
Right. But it means, it does mean, it's a lot of transition back to some practices while trying to keep best practice in place. So.
So it's not, it's not just going back to the old way. It's trying to keep the good stuff.
Yes.
And that's really, that's my, that's been my major concern since the beginning. Because we've, we've invested so much in PBL and in the standards and in the system that, you know, I would like, I would love it if we could have a system where the teachers are still in their, in their daily work, they're still using the one to fours. And then they can translate that into a number when it comes time for a report to go home to the parents or time for a report card or a progress report. That way, you know you're still working, you're still meeting the standards. And when you get to the end, you know, they've either met the standard or they haven't. And you, and to be able to translate that into a number and still be able, they can still write, they can still write a report on, this is why your student got an 80 instead of 100 because he hasn't met this part of the standard yet. So that, so that the meeting the standards isn't diminished in any way. I guess that's, that's just really, that's, that's what I, that's my concern. Because I think meeting the standards is, you know, the system that we've had in place has been working really well. And I think if we could figure out some way where we could still have the teachers do their evaluations on a regular basis like they have been doing, one through four, see where they are, how they're progressing. And then when it comes time for, for like a progress report, then you say, okay, this is, this is where, this is where we are. This is where the numbers translate. If you're.
And you're kind of asking to do two different things, it seems like.
Well, it's, it's what we have to do, I think, if we're going to make this.
We always want to meet the standards. That's just a fact.
Yeah, you just get graded on the standard.
I don't see what the problem is, really. I mean, from my point of view in business, if things need to change, we change them. And usually, in a government system, it's a slow move, slow process. So it is scary.
And we're working on it. And we're trying to find ways to, to let the kids know what the standard is and what they need to do.
Right.
But putting a number on that, like 50%, 50%, how, what, what 50% do they know? What 50% don't they know? So that's the tricky part to this. And so we're trying to work with, how do you create rubrics that are still going to show kids where, what they need to do to hit that mastery level? And what does that equate to?
Well, they definitely had the like one through four or whatever rubric when my kids were going through the school system and they didn't, it was a zero to 100. And yet they knew where to go. And there was a list of things, because I'm always on this end, the good end, right? Number four, whatever, if four was the best. You know, and in four, it said, well, as long as, like say, writing a paper, as long as you had the spelling correct, the paragraphs, intent, okay, that's good if you get all that. And then everything was like delineated. So.
And we don't want to lose that. Because kids need to know what the expectation is. So we're working on it.
I'm sure you'll work something out.
I have faith in you guys. I have faith in the administration and the teachers.
That's right. I'm sure you'll work it out.
Figuring it out.
If the school system desires to make this change, it really is the best, this is the time as we bring Brightspace in.
Right.
If we didn't get Brightspace, the teachers and the administration and the committee that was led through Mike to get this new software program, Learning Management System called Brightspace, no one anticipated zero to 100 when it was created. It was based on policy and practice of the PBL system that you created six years ago. I think we got lucky in that what you shopped for and what I eventually, I didn't do any of the shop, I just said, show me three and tell me which one you want. The one we went with does allow and has some pieces to it that actually answers some of these questions. So it's, like I said, the timing on this, if you're going to go, couldn't work better because the teachers are learning a new process and along with that can, can make this change. It would be much more difficult if this came up in September or October. The timing does seem, does seem to kind of work. So I just wanted, I just wanted you guys to know that. And whether we do it June 2nd or September 2nd, it isn't going to make any difference. I'd rather just, if it's rushed, it's rushed. If it is, it is. It's not going to be any better if we wait till September 1st or 2nd than it's going to be on June 3rd.
Well, I meant the behind the scenes for the IT guy. There's probably a lot of.
He can't do anything behind the scenes without the teachers running their, their kids through it.
Okay.
And we don't have them. I got him, but I don't have them.
We, we come up with these great ideas and lay it on the table and like this looks great. And then we show it to some teachers and like this looks great. Then we show it to everybody. And we were back at the drawing board. So it's got to be.
Not always back to the drawing board. What is, it's a refining process. You don't always run back and have nothing. We go back with more and then we tweak and retweak and there's just a lot of that, a lot of.
Final draft for good communication to parents and teachers still have that ability to get granular with, you know, standard proficiency.
Yes, yes, that's what I'm saying. That can be behind the scenes and in the concise end report for the parent.
The ultimate goal is communication. The triangle that we're talking about in the workshop, right? Get that dialed in and that's what we're working on.
Yeah.
I just have a quick question about, was it ever told to parents that we were changing to Brightspace? Like changing the report card? I was just wondering.
From Mastery Connect?
Yeah.
It was brought up here at a meeting.
We did it a couple of meetings ago.
No, but are you saying? An email?
Text didn't go out.
Yeah, or just any, like I just, like even like, when did the teachers know that that was like changing?
Well, there was a committee to look at all the, all the things. Yeah.
It didn't happen on a whim. It happened because our contract license with Mastery Connect was pending. And I, and I mentioned to Mike, this doesn't seem very user friendly. Let's not lock in for a few more years. Let's start shopping because we have to have a learning management system. And that's, two years ago, they formed a committee. And for me to make sure it would get used and, and provide support to the teachers, we let the teachers pick it. This is the tool you're going to use. So if you're going to build a house, you choose the hammer. So that's, ultimately, in layman's terms, that's how we got to where we are.
So the teachers have known that it's going to change to Brightspace for like this whole school year at least. But no, I don't think, there hasn't been a text or an email sent out to parents saying, your report card is changing next year.
Yeah, right. I just didn't know because I didn't like bring it like a parent teacher conference. Like it wasn't.
So the, the plan to unroll that started last month with the Brightspace update and what report cards could look like, not the workshop, the school committee. So you were informed and anybody who was here was informed. And we've been putting out, school board meeting will be, school committee will be happening this Thursday. Once we have these ducks in a row, our plan is to have our open house the first day of September, which kids aren't back yet, but teachers are, and have parents come in and do some PD with us at open house around what Brightspace is and how to use it, how to use it from your phone, how to use it at home. And that's kind of the summer work to ensure that we can get the parent engagement. So to get a lot of this out now while we're still trying to get a lot of the small pieces together for this wouldn't be the right time. But as an overview, are we changing learning management? Yes, that's out there. What does it look like for you as a parent? No, and the timing's not right yet, but it, but it will be. Yeah. I think the few parents that were here when that happened really seemed to like it compared to what we had or what we have of Mastery Connect.[1680.16]